I'd like to call this regular meeting of council to order. All right. First item is the adoption of the agenda recommendation that council adopts the February 13, 2018 regular meeting agenda as presented. Move her please, Councilor Butler. Secondary, Councilor Tripp. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Item 3A, recommendation council adopt the January 29, 2018 special to-go in-camera meeting minutes as presented. Move her please. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Frog. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Next recommendation council adopts the January 29, 2018 regular meeting minutes as presented. May I have them all, please? Councilor Tripp, secondary. Councilor Thompson. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. Under-registered petitions and delegations, subject matter is the Learning Garden delegation. Recommendation is council receives a report from the Learning Garden and further to direct staff to provide the charitable number for use with the Phoenix Foundation/Credit Union granting opportunity. Move her please. Councilor Ross, Councilor Tripp. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Mayor, Members of council, I'm Kristi Lupe and I am the Learning Garden. Thank you.
For your honor.
The Learning Garden liaison. And I am here tonight to give you an update on progress at the Learning Garden as well as to make a request that is in the... Mayor Conrad just read, asking you to consider giving... allowing us to use the CRA number of the city so that we can make application to the Phoenix Foundation grant money. The city has been a huge help and asset to us, and I'm gonna spell that out in a bit more detail as we go through the slides here. Just a second. So... Yeah, good, okay. Pretty easy. I think I can handle that. The first slide is a current picture, kind of a current, from about three or four months ago, of how we are planning on developing the Learning Garden. You're aware that the Learning Garden sits southeast behind the Aquatic Center and runs up to 72nd Avenue. And the Learning Gardens is based on permaculture principles. And the best way that I've come to understand permaculture principles is to see that the patterns in nature can be mimicked in human landscapes and for sustainable outcomes. So the Learning Garden will be... is providing and will provide more as we develop it, opportunities for people of all ages and all abilities to come and learn about food production and water conservation and soil production and sustainable landscape designs. What we've accomplished in the past... last year was a particularly productive year for the Learning Garden in terms of its volunteers. We had work parties pretty much weekly throughout the spring and summer and into the fall. And often they... at the beginning it was every other week. We had 20 regular volunteers and we think that they contributed about 500 hours to the garden. And we have 25 new volunteers who've signed on, that names that we've been able to gather from doing a survey and asking people if they were interested in becoming involved. So we have a new batch to tap into. We had the benefit of about 370 hours of paid labor, and that was thanks to Rowley Russell, RDKB Area D Director, who used his brand of aid to help us. And then you see all the major partners who've all contributed at the bottom of this slide, either cash or income, and City of Grand Forks and RDKB at the very top credit union as The work party. So here you see people, volunteers, working on the tool shed. And the tool shed was the major focus of our activity over the past season, last season. And the tool shed, it uses, it houses tools and irrigation controls. And it is built by using locally sourced materials and recyclable materials. So there's slag that is a major component of the building, as well as plant blocks that when you're a tree planter, you get little tiny trees in these blocks, and that becomes the structure of it. The year before that, the major piece of infrastructure that we built was the Janeling Fence. And so it surrounds the entire garden. It was an important thing to do right away because we wanted to make sure it was secure, the area was secure. But an 800-foot perimeter and 10 feet high with four openings. And the city was a very big contributor to that. We had city workers who volunteered a couple of days to be able to put the concrete footings in place for the Janeling Fence. So much, big work and much appreciated. The tool shed, we also call it the watershed because it houses our tools and irrigation controls. And you can see it a little closer up here. It needs still to have a living roof on it and an attached greenhouse, and we hope that those will come if we're successful with our grant application to Phoenix. The picture on the right you see is a main irrigation line, again, a contribution from the city, and it is used for maintenance and backflow protection. Don't ask me any more details than that about it. And the next is a drawing that Peter Matheson did, which is the concept drawing behind the watershed. Basically, it'll give you a sense of what the whole thing will look like once the living roof is... been applied and installed. What else have we accomplished? Well, we've created a lot of soil and lots of contributions from local farmers. We got some organic hemp bales and organic straw bales that mixed together with dirt and manure and cardboard, create soil. We were going to have the pathways done by the fall, but the snow beat us out. So that woodchips that you see with the snow sitting on it, and they will be placed into our bordered areas that you see on the upper photo there. And we will be doing that in the finishing up in the spring and getting a few more chicks as well. We've also built raised beds, and the concept behind that is to be able to provide seniors and hopefully people from Silver Kettle to be able to come down and not have to bend over to do some gardening. And so we've got them built and ready to go, and we're hoping that in the spring we'll start to get some seniors coming in and doing that. We've planted six trees as part of our food forest and many edible plants, and we have acquired a nice set of tools, wheelbarrows, rakes, shovels, and sprinklers. So how are we doing with our big plan? What you see here is where the checks are, we've done them. Where it's been highlighted in yellow, these are the areas that we would hope to be putting some energy into if we were successful with our Phoenix grant. So more chicks for the pathways, signage, we haven't even really started on at all. We need to be able to acknowledge our sponsors and put up educational signs, complete the greenhouse and... or complete the living roof and the greenhouse, put in more trees and shrubs. The big project would be in the spring, hopefully, again, depending on grants, putting in an irrig... a drip irrigation system with public workshops on how to do that, so that the whole Learning Garden can be irrigated on timers. And then, because otherwise people were going frequently, three or four times a week, and handling it. We'd like not to have to do that for another year. Structural materials would also be needed for garden beds. The City of Grand Forks has played a very key role in the Learning Garden so far. We've $6,200 for in-kind labor and materials through helping, contributing all of that labor and materials to fencing, the tool shed pad, and some of the irrigation foundational pieces. You can see that's a pretty big chunk, and we are very grateful, and we really could not have done it without the city. Donated materials and services. See, there's some major donated materials. There have been a lot more than this, but these are the major items. And you can see there's many local businesses, as well as the city, and some individual farmers like Grand Union Farms, Colleen Ross, and contributing things like the PVC pipe and plastic for our hoop houses that will be built, and driving a tractor down so that we could move some bales. So it's a wide range of people and organizations who have donated. We have calculated that the final cost, projected cost of the whole Learning Garden will be about $125,000. We have no way of really estimating how much these donated materials cost, but I think, you know, we feel good that we're getting some support from the community, and we know that there's interest out there in making the Learning Garden a more well-used place. So our request to council, and this is my language, it needs to be wordsmith, but we are asking for a resolution that the City of Grand Forks allows our sponsor, which is the Grand Forks Environning Regional Agricultural Society, to use the city's CRA number to facilitate the Learning Gardens' application for a Phoenix Foundation grant in 2018. I know there probably are concerns that, you know, are we asking you for money? No. This is a flow-through. This would be simply using the CRA number in order for it to flow through from your folks into the Agic Society and then to us. And there would be no report writing, so it's strictly an administrative request that we're making here. So, thank you very much for your generous support of this community-based labor of love and very much a work in progress.
Time.
Yes, they gotta practice that. Well, thank you. And if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer, or try to answer anyway. And then just one other thing, if any of you individually or as a group would like to have a tour of the place when the snow melts, we'd be thrilled to offer that to you.
Yes, girl. Can we go back to the drawing, which was the second slide in?
Yeah.
Just a question. Hot, my...
Pollinator.
My...
Microclimate.
Oh, micro.
No, well, hot.
What are you...
Micro... This thing.
Microclimate.
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 That's what I thought it was, microclimate, but that's not a C.
It's dropped.
It's micro.
Okay. I just could, and I thought guild. Is that the only thing you could read? Okay. Councilor wondered what it was.
I do have a question for you, but I have to turn that off. I can talk to you. I just went through the mayor to the delegation. Thank you very much for the update. It's nice to see what's been going on, and I know the commission's looking forward to having a tour in the spring when the snow's gone. Just curious, how much are you applying for, for the grant, the Phoenix Foundation, to do all this work?
I don't know the exact figure. 30, is it 25, 30?
Believe it is from what we're discussing, and I think the numbers need to be finalized straight.
Yeah. So, anyway, somewhere between $20,000 and $25,000. And that is the Phoenix Foundation and Credit Union combination.
Two separate grants?
It's complicated, and I would really not even want to try to explain it because I've asked about three or four times. And all I know is that it's the Phoenix Foundation, but it's the process, and yet there's separate monies.
Councilor Tripp and Councilor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. And this would be just a question for the CAO. Are there any ramifications with using that, letting that CRA number be used?
We worship, not at all. We do this quite regularly for different organizations that don't have the proper means to be able to do it. And so it, and as Kristi Lupe said, it's a flow-through, and so it's just a little bit of administrative process. It's not a cost, and so we just manage that as far as, in accordance with CRA regulations as well.
Thank you. I'll just make my add. Kristi, thank you for the presentation, and we were over there, I believe it was last summer when the Fall Fair was on, we had a cabinet, it was a tour through there, and I was very impressed by those raised beds. I think it was old freezers or something that they used. I thought, what a... that's just really creative and a really neat use of those, of, yeah, things that are in our landfill.
Now seeing old freezers, I kinda go...
Yeah, yeah.
Whoa!
The great historic potatoes underground, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna ask the same question, thanks for answering that, asking that, Councilor Tripp. Is there a wish list? It'd be great, because some of us in the community have tools and equipment that we are retiring or no longer need or use. And so it would be great for, you know, to put out a wish list into the community so that we can see what we can continue to give to build that tool shed. And is, I'm just wondering, is that part of the tool-sharing library that was an initiative of the Agricultural Society a few years ago, or are the tools just specifically gonna be in the Learning Garden?
They are specifically...
Very much heavily used there. So they're just gonna stay on them?
Yeah.
Stay there? Okay.
Councilor Thompson.
Yes, that was the mayor's presentation, Kristi. On the 21st of February at 7:00, the Phoenix Foundation is gonna be hosting a public meeting with the Vancouver Foundation in attendance. So that may be an opportunity for you to come and learn, and perhaps in addition to the Phoenix Foundation application, that might be an opportunity for... and I'm not saying, you know, yes or no, but to learn and maybe there's an opportunity to be there for some additional funding for your project as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Butler.
I have to ask, as much as I love the project and love gardens, I'm sure there's people out there that are wondering why a garden costs more than $100,000 to build. So how do you answer to those people?
Well, there are structural... Yeah. Got it. So the phase plan that covers sort of the major components will show you that around phase four, which we will be, you know, we're sort of between one and two and verging into three at this point, but there's a fourth phase, and that is where we start to get into the major pieces of infrastructure, like a big greenhouse, the water, green water harvesting system, and the outdoor classroom. So there's, there's a lot more to go, and we're kind of starting with the basics, and we will continue to grow as we get the funding for it and as the community, you know, responds. So I think that's where the big price tags will be coming.
And you want that, you're gonna have bathrooms, do you have any bathrooms there as well?
There's a kitchen idea.
Yeah.
I think that was in the plan there. You can see that with the outdoor classroom, our kitchen. So, yeah, you know, it can get, we can get as big as we want. And so I think actually, I'm always kind of surprised that $125,000 doesn't sound like that much when you consider all that's going to come from it and how much we've had already donated. And so those donations, and like the tool shed, pretty cheap because it's been made out of slag and recycled foam boxes. So if you, you know, we, this is part of the permaculture principles, and if we can continue to do this, you know, those costs will go down.
Do we have any other questions? Hearing none?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All those in favor to receive? Anyone opposed? So carried.
Do we need the motions about the CRA number?
It was part of the...
That's all part of the...
Any comments? Okay, moving on to item 6A, written reports of council. Recommendation is all written reports of council submitted to the February 13, 2018 regular meeting be received. Move her please, Councilor Ross. Secondary, Councilor Tripp. All those in favor to receive? Anyone opposed? So carried. 7A, verbal reports from the RDKB rep, I'm gonna do myself. The recommendation is that Mayor Conrad's report on the activities of regional district boundary given verbally at this meeting be received. Move her please. Councilor Ross, secondary. Councilor Tripp. Okay. Weighing in on this one, basically was the BCD meeting that we had. There's a couple items, again, of course, BC Transit was in the main focal point again. There's talk about the extra funding that's required, so otherwise the service would be cut in half. Lisa Trotter, the interim regional transit manager, had mentioned that there might be a need for a referendum to increase the funding so that it doesn't have to have the cuts. Greenwood already had a petition going of 100 names to request better service. Apparently, there was a situation where there were 40 people getting on the bus and two couldn't even get on. And possibility to increase fare rates was another subject of discussion, and they were quite prepared to increase the fare rates so as to keep it going. Furthermore, Kevin Schubert, who's also from BC Transit, said there was a possibility of some interim assistance from BC Transit so as on the funding, so as to keep it going until such a time that the measures are in place. There was other discussions regarding independent third-party participants coming into the program, and this, my discussion with Jennifer Wetmore was the fact that possibly an organization like the Silver Kettle, when their bus is not being utilized to its full extent, could kick in, but this would all have to be arranged with BC Transit if they were even willing to consider taking on an independent partner to do this. That would be that one. That was it. Then the next one was on the Boundary Trails Recreational Master Plan from Cascade Environmental Resources Group. Move on to next phase two and three. The background history on that one, there's a cost of $69,720. $40,000 had already been allocated from Area D and E from the gas tax. There's a $29,000 amount remaining to be established on how it's gonna be funded by the other stakeholders, which would be the municipalities or the communities, and the motion to move forward to the next phase had failed. Then there was discussion on the library. They presented their budget, and one item that came up were the security issues at the library here in Grand Forks, and my comment on that was that if any, they were not aware of who to discuss this with. So my recommendation was if they would want to meet with me on this, because we've had discussions on this before with the RCMP, and they weren't aware of that. So they said that's quick to know, and that's where that part ended. And that was basically the whole meeting. So, Councilor Butler.
I just wanted to clarify what you said there. You were talking about the Trails Master Plan?
Yeah.
Was it? And that they needed $29,000 still from communities like Midway, Greenwood, Grand Forks?
Yeah.
So that's going to be coming forward as an ask soon?
That was the intention, because the next phase was two and three to move forward because it was, they were in phase one and they wanted to have to move on to phase two and three. And because of the lack of funding that was still required, it didn't pass.
Okay.
So at this point, they're still at phase one, two and three has not, until they come to grips with how they're gonna do this and get that money that's still missing. Councilor Thompson.
Does that trail not go into Area C as well? And Area C wasn't prepared to participate in it?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Or you... Pardon? Was it just Area D?
D and E.
And...
Any other questions? All those in favor?
One more.
Councilor Hammond.
Yeah, I'm just curious, since TOTA is quite involved in the Trails process, Thompson Economic Tourism Association, and we're being charged as well, and working in partnership with our Trails communities, I'm just wondering if they've offered assistance. I remember when I went to a BDC meeting, when TOTA was there, presenters, and I was quite excited. Every time I've been to a meeting, my TOTA's been involved, I've been excited at their involvement in our region. And so I'm just wondering if they have, if what their partnership role is in funding, or if there is one?
I have no answer for that one because they have not realistically been involved in this. This was a consulting firm that was taking on the Cascade Environmental Resource Group to handle the, you know, the advisory part of how this should proceed in the future. And TOTA basically not directly involved in this at all. So obviously with the, with the amount of money that's, you know, total cost, there seems to be still that lack, and it's no, there's no knowledge right now of how we're gonna come up with that amount of money. So at this point in time, most of the directors felt that.
As a follow-up, who hired this consulting firm?
Regional.
Regional district?
Yeah.
And they hired them before they got commitments from the other municipalities for funding to assist?
Not directly, not directly. This discussion was on, we were going to phase one. It was at the time when the former CAO was still there, and there was no commitment or requirement that we would have to go further than phase one at that time. So we embarked on phase one, and here we are. Phase two and three is not moving forward because of the cost. So there was always that ability for whatever the stakeholders were, they could pull out. And at this point in time, they felt there was no feasibility to commit this kind of funding. So at this point, we're in kind of nimble until we can pull, until there's a way to acquire these funds. Okay. All those in favor to receive? Anyone opposed? So carried. All right. Moving on to recommendations from staff for decision. Recommendation is council directs staff to apply for the 2018 intake of the BC Air Access Program. Move her please. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Ross. Discussion, Councilor Tripp. Any final questions? Councilor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Murray. I just have a question for staff. I think this is a good opportunity to expand the water services out of the airport. And right now, the pipe that we have going in, I understand that it's a bit too small for the capacity, so would this be used to upgrade the size of the pipe going into the airport grounds? And what is the size of the pipe right now?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. The size of the pipe right now is 10 inches on Second Street, going 6 inches for half of the length, and then tapering to 3 inches for the other half. We are looking to upgrade it to 10 inches throughout the length.
Take another kick at the water can, eh?
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried. 8D. Subject matter, recommendation for a development permit for a contractor shop at 8168 Donaldson Drive from Development Engineering Services. Recommendation, council approves the development permit application for a contractor shop to be located at 8168 Donaldson Drive, legally described as Lot 8, Block 14, BL 520, SDY D, Plan 1339. Plan 1339. Move her please, Counselor Ross, Counselor Butter. Discussion, Counselor Croft.
Just a question on the site plan. It shows the shop, and it shows it's written down septic field. That's not big enough area for septic field, is it?
No.
Is that just from the, that's where it used to be, or?
Mr. Murray, thank you. So the, this is 12 feet from the shop to the fence line, and it's gonna be a septic field. I don't believe there's a kitchen, and there's not a residence, so it's basically a toilet and a washing facility, essentially.
Okay, so it'll fit whatever they've got designed for it.
Yeah.
It'll fit in that space. I just never seen a space that small.
One of the, one of the conditions of of the building is that the septic installer designed, installed a system for, you know, for the-
For that, yeah, yeah.
It's been referred to here. All the buildings are.
Okay. Basically, there's no bedroom and you create, but probably the size asked for bedroom.
Exactly.
Shouldn't there be downstream and plan to add? Then what would happen? You'd have to lose some water space. All right. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. All right, moving on to item 8C, which is the FCM Municipal Asset Management Program Grant Application from Engineering and Development. The recommendation is that council direct staff to apply to the FCM's Municipal Asset Management Program for upgrades to geographic information system and data collection of asset information. And that the city of Grand Forks commits 12,000 from its 2018 operating budget towards the cost of this initiative. Also added on to that, and that the city of Grand Fork commits to conducting the following activities in its proposed project to advance our asset management program, as in needs assessment, implement GIS software and define standard, standards, and data collection. Counselor will have that portion as an add-on to the recommendation. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Hammond. Counselor Hammond.
Yeah, since this doesn't have to be added to our budget because it's already existing in there, I'm prepared to vote for this.
Could we just get a wording somewhere of that extra, what you were putting in there? Because it, it goes after that line there, right?
After the word initiative.
Initiative, then there was another sentence?
Okay. And that the city of Grand Forks commits to conducting the following activities in its proposed project to advance our asset management program insofar as, number one, needs assessment, two, implement GIS software and define standards, and three, data collection.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? So carry. Okay, we have no requests, we have no information items. Moving on to the bylaw section. 11A. Subject matter is the third reading of OCP Bylaw Amendment and Zoning Bylaw, replace and repeal Development and Engineering Services. There have been some changes in the wording of these recommendations, so rather than the amend the agenda at the beginning, I want counsel to see this. But apparently, because of the new format, as per our deputy corporate officer, my recommendation is that we refer this to our next meeting so that the changes can be implemented. And at that point in time, I think we'll be able to address it clearer, only for the the reason of transparency that we just don't amend the agenda and take 11A out. Felt it all in there that counsel is aware of the reasoning why.
I'd like to motion. On second opinion.
All those in favor to refer? Thank you. So carry. All right. There's no lead items.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Sorry. Just back to that previous that's been deferred. Can we do all of those in one resolution, or do we need separate resolutions for each?
It's cleaner to do separate resolutions.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All right. We're moving on to the questions from the public and the media.
We have to do some of that.
We have to do what?
We have the zoning bylaw.
I was going to that, too.
No, that's all part of that. All of those, all four items.
That's all the three of them.
Yeah, inclusive. Okay. Questions from public and media, again, everyone, same format. Please stay within the parameters of the subject matter on the agenda. Having said that, where you go? Right? I have a motion to adjourn. Counselor Ross, Counselor Tripp, all those in favor?